We're all here?
Kathy's here.
Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Hole for March 4th. If you could please call the role.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar?
All right, we have minutes for the February 25th meeting. And Vice President Spatafor?
Madam President, I move the approval of the minutes from February 25th, 2019.
We have a motion on the floor. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose same sign. At this time, this is the opportunity for public comment. If you have items on the agenda that you wish to comment on, please come forward. Also, those, there are certain items on here that people will be brought up to the table to discuss as well. So, please feel free, if you've got comments, to come to the podium at this time and give your name.
Hello, my name is Mark Parker. I'm Vice Chairperson of the Employees Retirement System. I'm here today to just give a little background on, we have an employee here, Eric Hassett, who's looking for retirement eligibility, looking to retire from his defined benefit plan. So, Mr. Hassett was, in 2003, Mr. Hassett moved from the defined contribution plan that had been set up by the city in about 1995. And in 2000, at the end of 2003, beginning of 2004, they moved a number of Teamster employees into the defined benefit plan under the Benavides Administration. The Benavides Administration produced a document called the Retirement Information Sessions Document. And in that document, they explained to these employees how to get into the defined benefit plan. They were to, they could pay a certain amount of money. And in this document, it goes through all the calculations that you needed to do to pay your way back into the defined benefit plan. You could, you could pay for the years that you were in that previous DC plan. This particular employee wrote a very large check to the city based on this document, the, this document, to get back into the defined benefit plan. One of the provisions that is outlined on the front page of this information session document is that your, for retirement eligibility purposes, your, all of your full-time years with the city count for retirement eligibility. And that is what this employee is asking for here today. And this is not anything unusual. This is, in fact, every, every employee that comes out of the Employees Retirement System, they all have retirement eligibility based on all of their years of full-time service. So, this is, this is, this is totally consistent with what every other employee gets and what the Benavides Administration set up. They wanted to be just consistent with all the other employees. So, they set up the defined benefit plan, and they clearly entitled this employee to retirement eligibility with all of his years of full-time service. So, that's just some of the background on that particular case. And I'm sure that Dennis Parker and Eric Hassett will fill in all the other details that, as needed. Thank you very much for considering this, this issue today.
All right, thank you. Chairman Elsitt would like to address the council at this time. All right, seeing no one, let's move into the first, which is the Tifa bond refinancing. And I'm assuming that Angie, you're up for the next few of these.
Good evening. We have two bond refinancing opportunities before you. The first one, as Council President mentioned, is the refunding of the 2009 Tifa bonds that we have, Tax Increment Financing Authority Bonds. This is purely for interest cost savings. It is estimated that over the life of the bonds, they go till 2039. Over the life of the bonds, we could realize about a $2 million savings. And the resolution before you is a little different in that it is not an authorizing resolution, but rather is an affirmation of the city's full faith and credit of that. The existing bonds have the city's full faith and credit. The refunding bonds would have the same thing. But these bonds are a little bit different in that the Tifa Board is the actual, actually the ones that would do the authorizing resolution for those. So, you have before you a affirmation of the city's full faith and credit for the, for the reissued bonds, or the refunding bonds.
And could you enlighten the public, as well as some on council, what these bonds have been used for?
Yes, yes. So, these, these bonds were, actually, the original bonds for, were for a number of redevelopment projects downtown. They, so the Tifa District, our Tax Increment Financing District, captures taxes from certain properties in what we call our Tifa District. And those dollars are used to pay off those bonds. So, the dollars that are captured went for redevelopment of the, of the downtown. Did you want me to answer a question?
Go, go ahead, and then I'll, I'll call.
Go ahead, okay, all right. Yep, that's okay. Oh, that's okay. Oh, that's okay. So, then, because this was, the repayment of these bonds is, what am I trying to say? Is dependent on the, the captures that occur in the district. What happened was, starting back in 2009, when the market values started to drop, we had a gap between what we could pay with those, in terms of the capture of those, of those dollars, and, and what we needed to pay for those bonds. So, they were refinanced actually three times, and 2009, 2014, and then just very recently in 2018. And those were to extend the payments a bit, so that we could allow for that, those values to come back up and for our capture to rebate, be repaid over a little bit longer period of time. This, though, is different in that this is refunding only for interest cost savings. So, we're not extending the bond payments at all. This is only to say that we can get better interest rates at this point.
Councilmember Spitzley, did you have a question? Your Speaker.
Madam President, I'm a little confused about the resolution. So, I'm looking at the resolutions. The resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of the general obligation refunding bonds, that's the one we're talking about?
I believe you might be looking at the one for our, the second one on the agenda, which is for the Build America Bonds.
No, I'm, I don't think so.
Okay.
Unless I've got the wrong one up here. Oh, I must be, apologies. All right.
No questions in?
No questions, no.
Are there anyone else with any other questions? Vice President Spatafor?
I just wanted to clarify, you said $2 million over the next 10 years?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry, 20 years, it's, they go to 2039.
Yeah, I'm bad at math.
Any other questions? To our internal auditor, did you review this?
Yes, I did, and I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you. Vice President Spatafor?
Madam President, I move the resolution authorizing the full faith and credit of the city on the 2009 Tifa bond refinancing.
And this would be on the agenda for the 11th. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose same sign. Angie, we're to the 2009 Build America.
Okay, very similarly, we have an opportunity to refund 2009 Build America Bonds. These bonds were issued back in 2009, and it was for, actually, two different things, for streets. About, about half of the bonds were for streets. About half of the bonds were for our sewer system. And the reason for, for those being let together, so to speak, in one bond issuance, is that at the time, this is when the ARAMonies were available, and we actually get an interest credit. So, we actually got, have a reduced amount that we have to repay. This was, this was during the recession, when those monies were being, when those types of programs were being offered. So, the, the city did bond at that time. We have the opportunity, there have been some IRS changes in the rulings that allow us to refund those now. And, so, we are looking at about a $1 point million saving, $1 point million dollar savings. And those go to 2031. And again, about half of that would be streets, and about half of that would be our sewer fund.
And you said a 1.1 million?
About, no, estimated to be about a 1.9 million.
1.9 million, all right. And this was shovel-ready projects?
Yes, actually, those, those were very competitive. We had to, yeah, we had to, to apply for those, and it was those that were shovel-ready, yep.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President. Are there costs incurred to, for the refinancing process?
Yes, yes.
So, when you talk about, on the first one, a $2 million savings, and then on this one, it's a $1.9 million savings, is that after the costs for refinancing?
Yes, that's none of the costs, yep. And those are estimated. I do want to make it clear that until we actually go to market, we won't know for sure what we get. There are parameters in the authorizing resolution that say, if, if the day we go to market, if it's not going to be in the interest of the city to refinance it, if, if things aren't, aren't looking good in the market, we're not, we're going to realize those savings, we will not go forward with the financing. So, we can pull out for that. But until we go to market, we won't know for sure.
Similar to what we did last year, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there other questions? Seeing none, Vice President Spatafor?
Madam President, I move the resolution authorizing the refinancing of the 2009 Build America Bonds.
All right, we have motion. Again, this would be on for March 11th. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose same sign. Angie, we're now to the General Fund Status and Vacancy Report.
Okay, so, for the General Fund Status Report, this is for the period ended December 31st. Our, our fiscal year begins July 1st. So, this is the second quarter of the year. And this is a three-page report. The first two pages are sort of narrative, that basically reaffirm what are, or basically describe what are on the third page, which is all numbers. So, when we look at the, when we look at where we are for the year, we look at revenues, and we look at expenditures. And we want to benchmark both against our budgetary expectations. On the revenue side, we want to look at our pattern of our revenues, because they, they have different, our different revenue sources have different patterns. For example, I always use the example of property taxes. Those are, those are all, all do at the very beginning of the year for us, where income taxes are throughout the year, those types of things. So, we benchmark against that, that expectation of pattern. And to find that expectation of pattern, we, we look at the last three years and benchmark the collection pattern against what was ultimately collected. On the expenditure side, we look at the timing of our major expenditures and things we know about. So, things like our payroll, and when, when are those pay, when are those pay cycles going to hit? Certain things that we know about timing of certain payments. And we target, or we basically set benchmarks against those. So, when we look at where we were as of December 31st of this fiscal year, basically, the revenues were, were just slightly below our budgetary expectations, so right in that range. And expenditures are within, well, within budgetary expectations. If you would like me to go through the different categories?
Please.
The revenues are spelled out a little bit there. Property taxes are our largest revenue source in the general fund, and those aren't basically on target with where we would expect those to be. There are possibilities of appeals throughout the year that affect our property taxes, but at this point in the year, we're, we're, where we expect to be. Our income tax collections were ahead of, of our budgetary expectations at 34.8% collected, compared to 32.3% collected in previous years. Now, I did talk before, in our, in our previous quarter and discussion, that obviously, this is right at the time, this is right, December 31st is right before East Lansing's income tax went into effect. That went into effect January 1st. We are not expecting to have, to have a, a budgetary adjustment at all. Income taxes were budgeted somewhat conservatively, knowing that that was a possibility. So, I just want to mention that. Revenue sharing, we're on target where we would expect to be. And actually, the projections there from the state are looking, are looking better than what was initially proposed in the budget, which is good news. Our licenses and permits make up a very small amount or proportion of our revenues, about 1.5% of our general fund revenues. And we were below where we expected to be, at 20.6% of the budget, compared to 31.5%. That had to do with the timing of medical marijuana applications. Last year, those were collected, and that really kind of skewed that timeline. So, again, I'm not really concerned about license and permits, it makes up a very small proportion of our budget. Charges for services were, were pretty close to the average for the past three years, at 41.6% of the budget, compared to 42.2% in prior years. Fines and forfeitures, those have been a, a little bit of a challenge over the past several quarters. We have about 38.9% collected, compared to 42, 42.4%. And that has to do with lesser-than-anticipated penal case revenues coming in. Return on equity, we received two, return on equity payments from the Board of Water and Light throughout the fiscal year. December is our first payment, and then we'll receive another one in June. So, that is comparison there for that. And then our interest and rents and other revenues are smaller amounts, and those are actually about, a little bit more and, and on par with, with our collections, with our expectations, I should say. On the expenditure side, again, we kind of benchmark against where those major patterns of spending are. And as of December 31st, all the departments were well within their budgetary targets. Those are listed on Page 3. We've got the budgetary target, and then the percentage of budget to compare. And the City Clerk's Office and the Human Relations and Community Services Departments were ahead of that, or above where we would expect, but that has to do with the timing of elections, as well as some of the HRCS programs that, that, that occur. So, those weren't concerning either.
That it?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions, yeah?
Are there questions for Angie? Are there any questions? You have indicated that the East Lansing property tax doesn't go into, went into effect January 1st. How do, and, and I know you said that you don't believe that will have a, an impact on our, a substantial impact on our income tax revenue. Are we seeing increase in employment or increase in wages being paid?
I would say both. The unemployment rate is down, the employment rate is up. We also, we are also seeing more per, per, where sometimes it's hard to gauge whether it's employment level or, or wages, but, but I, we believe it's both, because in terms of the economic indicators of what we're seeing.
Okay. And then with the courts and the fines and forfeitures on that, have we, you know, determined what part of those issues are? Is it not showing, being able to make the fines and forfeitures? What, you know, do we have any idea what it is?
I'm trying to remember what that, what the discussions with the court was. I know that there's a number of things from the state right now impacting some of the fines and forfeitures, and what's, how those are administered. I'm trying, I don't recall off the top of my head the penal case issue, though.
Okay. All right, are there other questions for Angie? Mr. Brewer? And looking at this, did you see anything that jumped out at you, or any questions?
No, in review of the IFIS system, the finance system, checking and reconciling to the general fund that was provided by Angela, everything looked to be in order, even the public service amounts were booked, unlike the previous report that, that was explained by Angela.
Okay, thank you. So, that takes us to the vacancy factor. I know I've asked you this before, and I'm going to probably be asking it again. Why, why are we getting this now instead of having it sent to us earlier?
There are actually different routing methods. Per our charter, the General Fund Status Report is a quarterly report that is filed through the clerk's office. And so, that is then actually forwarded by the clerk. And so, this is a different one. This is something through, through one of the council priorities, so it does not follow that, that same City Clerk referral process.
I, I get that. But this agenda went out, there were requests made. I'm not sure why the information wasn't prepared this morning. If it wasn't prepared this morning, there was the opportunity to have it in the packet on Friday, that would have allowed for not only council members to take a review of it, but the public as well.
Okay.
You have no answer?
I don't, other than that, I didn't have a request for it. And I didn't, I actually didn't think about it. So, I, we can, in the future, we can get that to you, yeah. Now, sometimes, I will say, because this was ready last week, because there was a week delay, sometimes there is kind of getting it to the, to the, it does sometimes take to that last week to get it, because it is the quarter following it. It does take a, a combination between HR and finance to put it together. So, sometimes it does go up to that, but this was, this was ready a week, a week beforehand.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President. That, I guess that's what I was going to say, is I heard she said it was, it was ready last week. I thought I saw the Personnel Director out there, but, I mean, I, is that something we need to have, have the Personnel Director come and have a discussion? I mean, it would seem to me, I mean, we can ask Angie the questions, or Ms. Bennett the questions, but she's the Finance Director. So, if we want to know about the status of all of these, I, I would like to have the HR Director in here to ask a couple of questions. I think it's appropriate.
And I'm not sure, I, I did see her come up, if, Eric, do you want to see if she's?
I just think in the future, if we're going to do that, if, if we're going to talk about the vacancy factor reports, I, I really think we should have the HR Director here as well.
I, I don't disagree. It's been previous directors, it was difficult getting them here.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's the easiest way to put it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So, we'll wait just a minute. If you don't mind, we'll wait until Linda gets down here.
Would you like me to go ahead and speak to the budgetary aspect of it?
Yep, you can do that.
Okay, all right. The vacancy report is basically a budget monitoring tool, because we have budgeted a vacancy factor in the general fund budget for fiscal year 19, for the current fiscal year. And this is basically something to gauge, because we've, we've budgeted that vacancy report. It by no means mean we hold positions open specifically, absolutely not. But we do want to see if, if the amount that, of unspent monies attributable to vacancies is not as much as we anticipated, then we would need to make some other budgetary adjustments. So, really, this is a budget monitoring tool to say, are we on, are we on target? Are we okay? Or do we have to make some other budgetary adjustments? As of December 31st, this report kind of mirrors that timing of the General Fund Status Report. And as, as of that time, the amount that had, had not been spent compared to the, the expectation, so to speak, exceeds the expectation. So, there would be no budgetary adjustments needed.
Okay. Is, is she here coming down? Oh, she just? Okay. All right, well, we'll put this on hold then. Yes, Councilmember Garza?
And I don't think you'll be able to answer this, maybe you can. My question was, is why are more than half of these positions on hold? Is that something that the HR Director's going to have to answer, or?
I can speak generally, and, and reasons why they may be on hold. HR Director would have to speak a little more specifically, but I just know in general, they can be for a number of reasons. They can be that a position might be being restructured. It could be that the department has some other positions that are higher priority for, for filling, and so, they're working on those other positions, and then, you know, that those ones are on hold until you get to those positions. So, I just don't, kind of know generally why that might be.
Okay, Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Garza, one of the things that we've had continuing conversations with is if you see some of the hiring status where they're on hold, it has right before it, offset by contract?
Yes.
And that's been a continuing frustration for me, because I don't know what that means. And, you know, either the position is open, or it's not open. And if it's open, let's fill it. So, this offset by contract designation has been a, a source of frustration for me as well, because I don't really know what that is. And so, having the HR Director here to, to ask her what that means, and what the status of all of that is, is key. So, that's, you know, that's my two cents on that.
Okay. Well, Councilmember Washington?
Thank you, Madam President. Are you going to ask that our HR Director come and answer these? Because-
She, she just went down on the elevator. She will be back up here for our training. So, I intend to grab her at one point, and we'll have her out here-
Okay.
-answering the question.
Because I agree with Councilwoman Spitzley, these contracts have always been a point of contention with me, too.
Well, one of the things I've asked as part of this report, is when it says offset by contract, I want to know how much the position is being paid, and how much we're paying in the contract. I've asked that repeatedly, and I continue to ask that. Yes?
I can speak to that, actually. We looked into that after your request last week, or last quarter, I should say. That would take a great deal of work to do, because some of the, most of the contract, actually, workers do not work a full schedule, so you can't just apply a rate to, say, 40 hours. In addition, some of them are hired through temp agencies. And so, trying to align those pay periods up with our pay periods, because those bills are paid after the fact, would be a very time-intensive endeavor. And again, this is a budget monitoring tool to say, are we on track or not? We, we use the offset by contract to basically be on the conservative side, just to not apply any additional unspent monies for that. So, yeah, that would be, that would be very time-intensive to be able to calculate.
First of all, this is a, a document that councils ask for. Second of all, in order for us to make determinations on the budget, there are certain things that we want to be able to understand. And it's not just me that's asked these questions about what does it mean by the offset of a contract, and how much money we're utilizing for that position. If it's a temp agency, you're paying so much an hour, and I'm not sure why that would be so difficult to find. If they've signed a temporary contract for six months, you should know what that is. We're not going to hold you down to the penny, but if this position is, let's just use the position as $48,000 is the amount of a particular position, and we're paying $34,000 currently for that, then we understand what those savings are, and we can understand where we're going with it. If we're paying more than what that position is, we want to know that as well.
Yeah, the issue would-
Hello, how are you? I don't know if you have a copy of, and maybe Angie can give- I don't know if you have a copy of, and maybe Angie can give you a copy. I think, first of all, one of our, our questions had to do with the timeliness in receiving these. It was passed out by Angie today at the dais, and our concern was that in our committee of a whole packet, it talks about the general fund and the vacancy factor. And she did indicate that this was on, that they had the document a week ago because it was scheduled then, but for some reason, we didn't get it. I don't know whether you are transmitting it to finance or whether you're transmitting it to the mayor's office. Could you enlighten us on, on how you're dealing with this? Can you push the green light down to the button? Okay, thank you. The button down there, there's a green light that'll come on. Okay.
Got it!
You're good to go.
When we receive a request from council, it generally will come from the finance department. We will look into it and information is then provided back to finance. We, we work in collaboration together.
Our goal is to have these at the same time, if at all possible, that we're getting our general fund, so our status report. We realize that one is a charter requirement and one is an informational requirement that council has asked for. So I understand the time factor and things like that, but when we, but by the time it gets as a referral, we would like to see the vacancy factor as well. So if you could work with finance on that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, Angie?
Well, I just, I wanted to clarify, like Linda said, we, we work back and forth. We, finance actually drops in the final numbers. This was ready a week ago. That was me, that wasn't Linda, that, I mean, it was me. It was, it was available a week ago. When the, when the agenda got booted, I actually didn't even think about the vacancy factor and, and getting that too, so I apologize.
And, and I appreciate that, but we've been asking, this is not the first time. I, I can't remember the last time that we got a vacancy factor before the night that we were working on it. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. And I, you know, mistakes happen and I get that, you know, and there's no reason for me to get a vacancy factor. I don't have any explanation about some of the stuff that we continue to ask for. So I don't care if we got it last week or we get it today, we still don't have the answers to those questions that we keep asking for. So that, to me, is the focus. And we're not, I'm not trying to, you know, the goal isn't for gotcha or for any department, it's just, we're just trying to get some information. And so whether we got it today or we got it last week, we still don't, it still doesn't tell us the questions we've been asking.
I, I agree with you with that, Councilmember Spitzley, but part of what we've tried to do is make sure that the material that we are discussing as a council is available for the public to have had an opportunity to look at. And, and that has been my goal right along. So, I think Councilmember Garza first had a question and we'll go to your question to Linda at this time.
Thank you, Madam President. I was just curious to know how come more than half of these positions are on hold status?
Okay, without, well, let's go down to the finance position, budget analyst. Those are ones that have been going, or are in process of going to our company for evaluation of the job description, so those are moving forward. It's not, I know on hold sounds like we're holding them, but they are, they are being evaluated. So I can come down to the senior income tax auditor. We have, that is no longer on hold. We actually conducted interviews and are moving forward on that one. The human resource administrative assistant is being evaluated at Siegel. The principal recruiter position, I have actually, I'm working with my staff and evaluating. I have actually three hiring specialists and one on contract. What the position that I have open, the principal recruiter, I am looking at posting, well, I'm not looking at posting, I am going to post that position. That should be within the next couple of weeks. In the interim, one of my hiring specialists is working in that capacity out of class. The assistant city attorney, that's active. There are some in the city attorney's office, I believe that they are having interview, no?
So, I can talk more directly. The first one is an active process. We're in the interview right now. Legal advisory is being held because of an outstanding arbitration, and we don't have the results of that yet. The legal secretary position is in a reclass to see whether the duties actually are the same they used to be. So that may actually be a change of title. So that's where ours are. So there's no offset by contract on that, it's just on hold, that one assistant city attorney position.
Now, Councilman Garza, if you move down to the public service facilities, you will note that there are electricians and plumbing supervisors and people of those sort. I will admit, that is a difficult area for us to recruit from. We are doing everything that we can to reach out to different organizations, working with the unions, trying to recruit, but we are having difficulty in that area.
Is that because the wage is so low?
Wage does play a factor in, in that, but we offer other benefits as well. So when you look at the total package, I, I don't want to say that it's just because the wage is so low. But when you're coming from the private sector, you know, it, it is making a difference. And that's for, for most, as we going through the, we have a lot of actives. I think that as an HR department, this had, I, we recognize that this has been a priority for council. It's a priority for the administration as well to get jobs filled as soon as we can. So I'll just toot my own horn here, if you may. I think that we, HR has done a very good job in looking at positions that we need to move and moving those contracts forward.
Linda may be one of the, because when you see it on hold, people think that nothing's happening with it. It could say in progress, it could say active. I mean, at least we know that something was moving through the system. But when it says on hold, it gives the impression that we've chosen not, for whatever reason, at this time to fill that position.
That's an excellent recommendation, we'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Councilmember Washington and then Councilmember Garza, or Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you, Madam President. Linda, trust me, nobody's beaten up on you, you've only been here a year. So I think you've done a really good job. My concern is, we have a couple of these that have been, they were vacated in 2013 and 2014. At what point do those just come off the roster? One is the administrative assistant in finance. It says offset by contract and the date it was vacated was 4/18/2013. We also have a part-time clerk in Parks and Recreation. It says offset by contract, vacated since 2013. I see 2014 down here, different ones. Are we making those a priority to get filled or at what point do we just take them off?
Before you speak to that, I think one of the things is, is when it says in contract, there's actually a person there. So it's not as if it's a vacant position.
I understand that, but it's still been six years on contract. I mean, we're talking an administrative assistant. We're, we're not talking spec, I mean, I'm...
Specialized.
Specialized positions here.
And thank you for bringing that to my attention. I have been looking at positions, but I'll be honest, I haven't looked at date vacated as you've just pointed out. I will go back and make that a priority and see why and give you an answer as soon as I can.
Councilmember Hussein.
Thanks for being here, first of all. We really do appreciate the work you're doing. You're doing just a great job. With that being said, if we could go to the economic development, sorry, and planning department, I just want some information on the commercial property officer. If you remember, we amended, this council saw fit to amend the recommended budget that came from Andy Shore back in 2018 for fiscal year 2019. And here we are in March and we're getting ready to receive the recommended budget for fiscal year 2020 and that position's still not filled. Where are we at with that?
That's the commercial property officer?
Sure.
Is, is that the one that you're?
Yes.
Yeah, on my...
Says it's an active process.
Yeah, it's active. It's, it's, to my knowledge, it was filled. I think that we, we've, I don't think, I know that we've gone through the interviews and I believe that if it hasn't been filled, an offer's going to be made.
And just for councilmembers, if you look at the top date, we are looking at 12/31, so 2018. So we now are into March, so some of these positions could have been filled.
Thank you.
But I will definitely look into that too and give you a response.
Are there other questions? Any other questions for Linda at this time? Okay. Alright, I have, that does it with that and we thank you for taking questions off the cuff. We appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, it's placed on file. Next, we have the mayor's executive order for renaming Parkland Rotary Park, and that's already happened, so all we need to do is place this executive order on file. Do we have a motion? Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, it's my distinct honor to make the motion to place this executive order 2019-01 renaming of Parkland regarding Rotary Park on file.
Alright, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Alright, next is the executive order on the Lansing Veterans Commission. And if, yes, thank you, Angie. And if, Samantha, if you could speak to this executive order and the intent and for the public's information, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, I would love to. The mayor signed the executive order the day of the state of the city, which was early February, I think it was the 6th. It's running together, but he signed it early last month, about a month ago. I really wanted to raise the profile of the city's commitment to veterans. We have a couple of events highlight veterans each year, the Memorial Day and Veterans Day events. Those events have been declining in attendance and things like that, and so we really were talking, actually, at one of our staff meetings, and Martha Fajita on our staff is really passionate about veterans issues, and she said, what if we, we created a commission, it'd be really important, and we started talking about that. And so we really wanna engage our veteran community. It's a, it's obviously a very important part of our, of our city and our community and make sure they have input on policies that impact veterans and in particular to help with those events as well, so that we're getting the input from that community. We have applications coming in online right now. We have some folks that are already in the vetting process, so we, they're being vetted by LPD and Treasury, as everyone on all of our boards and commissions are. The mayor's going to be, it has already reviewed some of the applicants who applied early and is reviewing others, and we're hoping to have the turnaround in about 10 days, so we'll be able to announce all the commission members and get that kicked off. It will be chaired by former police chief Mark Alley, and so, so Chief Alley's coming back as he's done on several boards and commissions and helped us out. And so we have the charter and the executive order posted on the website, and I know there's a copy of that information in the packet as well, but we're really excited to get this commission up and running and have a, have a dedicated source and dedicated spot for input from our veteran community.
And how many members are on the commission?
That's a great question. I have to look in the charter again, I apologize. I was just, I was just reviewing it again and I don't, 13, not to exceed 13.
13, and is the requirement that they be Lansing residents?
Yes.
Okay. And you said the application is currently online? So that anyone in the public that is a veteran at this time could apply online for that position?
Please.
If you are not computer savvy or feel intimidated by the computer, you could call the mayor's office and an application would be sent to them?
Yes, of course.
Alright. Are there any questions on this? This is again raising awareness of our veterans along with looking at policies and things that affect veterans as part of the city.
Correct.
Are there any questions on this? Seeing none, what we need is a motion to place this on file. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move to place on file the mayor's executive order 2019-03 creation, creating the mayor's Lansing Veterans Commission.
Alright, we have a motion placed on file. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. At this point, we are to the ordinance review for employee retirement. If we could have Dennis Parker and Mr. Haskell please come to the table. Mark, if you'd like to come up as vice chair, you can grab a seat as well. He didn't want to, okay. We need to make sure that the green light is, oh, he's coming, alright. We need to make sure that the green light is on when you speak. At this time, if you could give, from the retirement board, if, Mr. Parker, if you could give us some explanation as to where we are, and then Mr. Haskell will give you an opportunity. And we do have on council, a member of the retirement board and Councilmember Washington, and then we'll turn to her. If we have questions during this process for clarification, please raise your hands and we'll recognize you and move on from there. Mr. Parker?
Good evening, everybody, and thanks for taking the time to...
Is the green light on?
Yeah.
Pull it up closer to you, thanks. That's good.
Good evening, everybody. I'm chair for the ERS board. We have a unique situation with Mr. Hasset here. In 1995, he transferred from the UAW to the Teamsters Bargaining Group. He had approximately 18 months in the ERS system. At the time, he transferred to the Teamsters, they were in the defined contribution system. He continued on there until 2003, when the Teamsters returned to the defined benefit system or the ERS system, as it's called. At the time of the return, he wrote a check for $24,000 to buy back into the ERS system, earning his service credits for that time that he had worked, that he was in the DC. At the time he was done, the city had provided him a document, these are retirement information sessions, frequently asked questions.
And that, for councilmembers, is in our packet of information. It's, the first page is AML group, but if you go through that, you will see the frequently asked questions.
In, in these frequently asked questions, this, this was what the employees were provided to make their decision on whether or not to buy back into the ERS plan or continue on through the DC. This is what he based his decision to write a $24,000 check to the city on. Under number one, bullet point number three, it clearly states, for retirement eligibility purposes, for your years of service with the city, is based on your full-time city hire date and membership in either the employee retirement system or the defined contribution plan. Mr. Hasset?
Before you go further, I have a question from Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So I understand he went from one retirement program to the other one, but when he paid the large sum of money to get service credit, he got, he got, that's for the years he was in the other retirement program, is that correct?
Correct, into the, into the DC, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
You know, and Mr. Hasset understands after 2012, he had requested to be credited those service credits for the, the benefit calculation. He is understanding at this point that he will not receive the monetary benefit of those service credits that he earned when he was in the UAW. What he's looking for is the retired, the eligibility to go. He's done his 25 years, he's returned. We've gone through this with the attorney for six months now. In early February, the board voted five to four to approve, to deem him eligible to retire based on his years of service with the city. to retire based on his years of service with the city. September 21st, he came back and requested his retirement, requested us to approve his retirement. The board voted at that time not to approve his retirement. So, with our, with the attorney representing the pension board, we've reviewed the ordinance, and there are, there is a section in the ordinance, I believe you all will have it, or highlighted portion of it, 292.15, which is restoration of credited service in certain cases. A lot of it speaks to leaving the city and rehiring, reemployment, but the, right in the middle of the paragraph, there is, or in cases of special circumstances upon approval of the council.
Okay, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Just so I'm clear, and I'm sorry if I'm asking a lot of questions, I just want to be clear with what we're doing. So, when, so the issue is, and as I'm reading, I think there's like 19 months of time, is that the issue here?
Yes.
And so there's 19 months of time that you had when you were with the UAW, right, that you want, applied so that you're eligible to retire, is that correct?
I'm asking for eligibility to retire. I'm not asking for the money, the...
No, I'm not, I know that, but you're asking, you're basically asking for the time, right, to become eligible to retire?
Yes, yeah.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I've always felt that was a separate issue.
Right.
The time served.
Right.
And that my time served is a separate issue as compared to benefit from the ERS system.
So there's no, there's no mechanism in place, I mean, you've, you've been a consistent employee, so there's no mechanism in place to bridge your time from one bargaining unit to another bargaining unit?
Other than this ordinance, 292.15, that would be correct.
Councilmember, Vice President Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President, and through you to Councilmember Spitzley, I just want to clarify, the issue isn't that he changed bargaining units, the issue is that the bargaining units changed retirement systems, is that correct?
Pardon me, could you say that again?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the issue isn't that he changed bargaining units necessarily, the issue seems to hinge on the fact that the bargaining unit he changed into was on a different retirement system, is that correct?
Correct, but then it went, and if you look at the packet of information...
It went back, no, I understand that, I just...
Correct, and it was...
It indicated it was about changing units, when it's actually about the unit was in a different retirement system.
Correct.
Okay, because there is a mechanism for changing units and still accruing service credit in the city, correct?
Correct. Yes, Councilmember Spitzley, then Councilmember Washington.
But the issue, isn't the issue, he's not looking for the monetary service credit, per se, right, because that's what I'm trying, because I get what you're saying, I'm trying to figure out, you're not looking to have your retirement benefits calculated based on that chunk of time.
Correct.
You're just, you, but in order for you to retire, and be eligible to retire, you have to include that chunk of time, right, as part of your retirement. That's what I'm, that's where I'm trying to get to what the crux is. It's not the money, it's the time.
Time, and I have Councilmember Washington, Councilmember Jackson, then back to Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually sit on the ERS Board as a trustee, and this whole thing seemed really odd to me. I believe this ordinance came in during Mayor Benavides' time.
Not, not the ordinance, but the change.
The change, and I have been able to confirm that it was never Mayor Benavides' intention to not have that time go toward eligibility for retirement, and I think, you know, we did get an opinion from our attorney, however, he was very clear that it's just his opinion, and he just went by what was in the ordinance, but as an employee, it clearly says, for retirement eligibility purposes, your years of service with the city is based on your city full-time hire date, and it is my contention that our employees should be able to read these frequently asked questions, and not have to be an attorney, and go back and decipher what the ordinance says, and what the law was, and what the intent is. He is not asking for one dime more. He's just asking, can I retire, because I've done my 25 years, and I'm ready to take my journey in a different direction. He, it will not cost the city one dime. It, I'm just dimed, frankly, I can't get past the fact that it seems like so many times we do things to hurt our employees, rather than try to work with them, when this isn't costing anybody anything. He wants to go, and I think it's clear what it says here, I'm clear on what Mayor Benavides' intention was. It was not that people would use these, lose these years of service. So, I am really glad to have this before my colleagues, so that Mr. Hassett has this opportunity to bring it before us for special consideration, than having to have to deal with attorneys that, and it's their job, it's their training, want to pick apart every part of the law, and so I, I have fully supported his eligibility to go, and I will leave you with that.
Councilmember Jackson, then Vice President Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President, and Councilwoman Washington, that was a good breakdown. I guess what we have to look at, according to the ordinance, is where, is in a case of special circumstance. So, I guess, my question is, what is the special circumstance? I guess, if you go straight to those points, but it sounds like it has to do with the way that the question and answer is written up, that you relied on. Is there anything besides that you want to retire a year and a half sooner, or, I mean, at the time that you bargained, did you have a different understanding of what, you know, the ordinance and law was? So, just to the special circumstances, so we'll just help with our finding.
I think you're asking, will or not I had knowledge, will or not there was an expectation that I would lose 18 months, and no, I had, I've had no knowledge of that until about six or eight months ago.
And that was because you relied on the information you had, basically, right?
Yes. This has just never been an issue until about six or eight months ago, when I actually started looking at retirement.
Vice President Spatafor.
I just, maybe it's a question for Angie, is she still here? Hi, Angie. So, what's the calculation for retirement? It's service credit times whatever our multiplier is for that unit, times some sort of final average compensation, is that accurate?
Yes.
So in order to calculate this, what would be asked for is service credit multiplier, FAC, minus the 18-month period of time?
It would be a reduced amount of time, yes.
Yes, okay.
Correct.
For what he's asking.
And I, I guess, I do have a question, and I don't mean to be a jerk about it, but subsection three of the acknowledgement regarding, clearly says, I hereby acknowledge being advised that I will accrue no additional service credits in the general employee's retirement plan if I accept the transfer slash promotion. Was that, was that, was this document given to you alongside the FAQ, and you read the FAQ over the, how, how did that, I mean, it's pretty clear in here, so I'm just trying to understand where the misleading statements were.
It's the acknowledgement you signed on May 8th of 1995. Yeah. What are you asking me about that document I signed in 1995? No, what are you asking me?
Oh, I'm sorry. You indicated, just a second, a few minutes ago, that this was the first acknowledgement of not accruing service credit was given to you just recently under, when you planned to retire.
Right.
And section three of the document you signed in 1995 clearly states, I hereby acknowledge being advised that I will accrue no additional service credits in the general employee's retirement plan if I accept the transfer and promotion.
True. I thought I was forfeiting the money, the 18 months of calculation at the time, and...
Not the eligibility.
Yeah, and more importantly, I think they, they were making me aware that I was going into a 401, a defined contribution plan.
That makes sense, I think, appreciate that.
And just to clarify that, Councilmember, Vice President Spatafor, is these frequently asked questions materialized after they went back to the defined benefit? So, you signed that statement, and then afterwards, you ended up with this frequently asked questions. I actually was involved with Mike Parker, and Brian Jeffries, and then Mayor Benavides, as they negotiated to go back into the defined benefit, and it was our understanding at that time that people would not lose any service credits as, as part of that. So I just want to...
I will, may I respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
I appreciate your response. That actually muddies the waters a little bit more, because his response actually satisfies my inquiry.
Okay.
Yeah, his response is better than yours, Madam President.
Okay, sorry about that. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I like his better, so I'm going to go with yours, so...
I thought it was the same thing.
Yeah. So, here's, here's, I personally, there's got to be a way to resolve this without opening up our charter, right, and, and I, I just have a fundamental, I think you are entitled to your time, end of question, end of story. So I'm trying to figure out, there's no way that our HR can work with you to, to resolve this without us opening up the charter, and that's the first thing. The second thing is, are there other people who are potentially going to be looking at this same thing?
Can I clarify something? This is not the charter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It won't open up the charter.
Thank you.
This is an ordinance, and the ordinance gives us the ability to make a decision if, under special circumstances, that allows us to...
Then I apologize, I, I thought it was a charter thing, and I'm fine with it.
Okay. Mr. Booth has been, I, I think Mr. Booth has been patiently waiting to make a couple of comments that might lead to additional questions by council members, so then I'll go to Mr. Garza after that.
Thank you, Council Chair. I just have four pieces of information that I'd like to put before you for your consideration in this issue. First, the frequently asked question document, under bullet point one, the fourth paragraph specifically accepts the UAW's transfer, UAW employees transferring into Teamsters. So you might want to take a look at that. And that was available to Mr. Hassett when he received it, after he had already executed the acknowledgement. Two, the, I think it was Councilmember Spitzley who asked, is this the only avenue? And actually, Mr. Hassett, this has really been a collective bargaining issue, and Mr. Hassett, through the grievance procedure, went through that procedure, and the grievance was resolved against Mr. Hassett, and consistent with our ordinance, and, and that was not appealed. So this has been a determined issue through our collective bargaining and grievance process. Three, in February of 2018, we had the same circumstance appear before the ERS Board through a Mr. Walter Allen, who was in the same situation as Mr. Hassett is in. He was also in the UAW, and then he transferred over to the Teamster. And in February of 2018, the ERS Board denied him the same type of relief that Mr. Hassett is asking for. And, and so, because of that, if this council is looking at amending its ordinance, and we like to be consistent, the way we treat our employees, but if you're looking at amending the ordinance, that should be done prospectively and not retroactively. And, and also, following up, and I think Ms. Bennett made a good point, and, and Mr. Lane does in a footnote, that before the ordinance should be amended, we would need to have an actuarial analysis done of what the cost is going to be to the city to amend this, to, to have this done, to consider these types of employees. And then finally, it was noted by Mr. Parker, in the, in the Allen, when the, in the Allen vote, that when it came up, and then in the discussion of deliberation, that Mr. Parker explained that, that no employee contributions from the UAW was made into the system, and I think that may have resulted in the check from Mr. Hassett, but I don't know that to purchase some of that, but the UAW members were not contributing to the system during this period of time, for that Mr. Hassett was in the UAW, or that Mr. Allen was in the UAW. So those are also factors, just informational for your consideration.
All right, I've got Councilmember Garza, then Council, Vice President Spatafor, then Councilmember Dunbar, but just to clarify something, we have not been asked to amend the ordinance. What we've been asked is the ordinance, under special circumstances, to make a determination based on that that's before us. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Eric, are you still employed right now? Are you still working?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I'm understanding here. Okay, and, and to what Mr. Booth said, as far as seeing what this would cost, me, it seems like it would be a savings to the city if they let you go, because most likely, they probably won't pay your predecessor the same amount as what you're getting paid right now.
Correct, I have those two figures.
Could you share them with us?
Yes. Yep. If, if I stay the additional 18 months, as the city is asking me to, my retirement goes up $3,300 a year for the rest of my life. I'm 54 years old.
Okay, and...
$3,300 a year, $3,300.
I'll say that again, my retirement will go up $3,300 a year, every year, for the rest of my life, if I work these, the 18 months additional.
So, so basically, that's, that's all I wanted to state, is that I'm assuming it would be a cost savings, it would be beneficiary, a benefit for the city to release you. That's all I'm saying, so I just want to make that point.
Councilmember Spatafor, Dunbar, and Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. This is maybe not a question that can be answered right now, but I don't, doesn't look like we're being asked to make a decision tonight, is that correct?
Pardon me?
We're not being asked to make a decision this evening?
Um, I think we're being asked to make one sooner than later.
Right, but I can ask a question that might...
You can ask some questions, and we could have this back on the 11th.
Okay, the questions I have, who all does this apply to? Are there employees that this might also affect, that have an impact on the city?
Do you have that answer, Dennis?
There's Mr. Hassett, Mr. Allen, and potentially another one at Park.
So, three.
Yes, and Mr. Allen, when he was there in 2018, was also asking for the monetary portion of that, and that's why we denied his request at that time. He was asking for the calculation to count towards this thing. Another thing to keep in mind, these people, if, if there was a Teamster, or a UAW member that had gone to Teamsters, and they had eight years of time in the system, they would have vested in that time. Their, when they came back, they would have bought up, and they would have bookended that time, so all of their time would have caught. These were for people that were vested, that were not vested in the system as of yet, by not having eight years in, but the time they were in there, the city did make their contribution for their portion of the pension, as if they were going to retire after 25 years. So that money, that money was put in there, figuring on them retiring after 25 years.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Our second question is, there's a discussion of a $24,000 check, is that correct? I assume that's to buy the time, if...
Mr. Haskell?
My, my 401K was underperforming at the time, I was buying back into the ERS system, so I coughed up $24,000 of my own money.
Okay, but this wasn't to buy service credit?
I was, I was buying time backwards into a pension program.
We might be saying different things, but trying to say the same thing. In, in a lot of pension systems, employees are offered the benefit of purchasing service credit at a lower value when they're new employees to retire early. This check was not for that purpose.
It was not for that purpose.
Okay, and Angie, this will be for you for a later date. These three employees, if they leave early, what's the bottom line actuarial effect to the city's retirement system to pay two years, well, whatever their years of service ends up being? Because I know you're not asking for the monetary value, and I understand that completely, but if you retire 18 months early, we're paying out a benefit 18 months before anticipated in the actuarial tables, and I know there'll be $3,300 more if we wait and let you retire then, but there still is a bottom line effect that I'd like to try to understand, if Angie can get that in.
Vice President Spatafor, Mr. Allen has already retired, so it would be Mr. Haskell and the other employee, so, so it would be...
There's no potential for clawback from Mr. Allen?
I, I have no idea.
Okay.
Any other... Any other questions that you'd like?
Those are my three, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And thank you for providing the answers you did, Mr. Parker.
That takes us to Councilmember Dunbar, Councilmember Washington.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Spatafor hinted at my last question, which is, what does this open us up to as far as a clawback from Mr. Allen? Like what, having made a different determination, and I get that it was not for time, it was for cash in his regard, but what would have changed about that retirement process that would potentially open us up for any kind of a claim by that gentleman?
Mr. Parker.
If, if Mr. Allen's retired, there would be nothing for him to clawback, because he would be, this case is strictly to eligibility, not to any monetary, so if he's already retired, there'd be nothing for him to clawback at.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Dunbar? Yours too? Okay. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. This would be my last comment, because this, this has been going on since I first came on the board, and as far as buying service credits, Mr. Hassett has reported to work every day for 25 years. He didn't buy five years, he didn't buy 10 years, he's actually worked 25 years. So that needs to be really clear. And for even if this 18 months, which he will not get any monetary value for it, even if he did and he does not, and whatever little bit this might cost the state, you know, it's kind of hard for me to stomach listening to that when we have over a $700 million deficit in our retirement and O P E G, O P E B system. So if we're talking about a few hundred dollars here and there, it's really hard for me to stomach to listen to that, because this is minuscule compared to what we are looking at, and what we are looking at in the future. This man's just asking to get on with his life, he's done his 25 years, and I think the ordinance is clear that we can review special circumstances, and I think that's what we're being asked to do.
Councilmember Hussein.
Just very quickly, you know, and I think the point Councilmember Garza was, was trying to make was that, in terms of the potential money lost by the city payout of a benefit earlier than, than, 18 months earlier, there's going to be a heck of a lot of savings in terms of wages as well. You're not going to hire in his replacement at what he's making now, he's at the top of the pay scale. But beyond that, I guess I'm interested in the process at this point. So we're not amending the ordinance, we're actually taking a specific section of the ordinance that allows us to determine that Mr. Hassett has a special circumstance. So would we then look at, so we would do this by resolution, correct?
My, the way I would see it is, we would do it by resolution that would go back then to the retirement board, saying that we overturned their decision. Do you want to differ with me on that?
Just saying.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Is that resolution subject to veto by the administration?
Any resolution is subject to veto.
Well, and so that's, I mean, even if we vote potentially to do that, I just, I just want to be clear that that, that, I just, I mean, I, I'm really trying to reconcile myself to the fact that the man worked 25 years, and we need to let him retire with whatever we're doing with, with the other stuff. And if it's, so again, I think, I just want to make sure, though, that we're not approving a benefit or a service to you, no disrespect, sir, that we may not have given other City of Lansing employees. That's very important to me, that we're being consistent, and you're telling me there's a couple others that may have that same issue. And so it seems like there's, there's, there's a problem that we need to address, and do we need to keep addressing it through a special circumstance through the ordinance? That's my, that's my question. How do we resolve it without coming up here each time for a special circumstance?
Could I follow up with that?
Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I think the situation is, will this ever come up again, where we have a unit move from one, or an employee move from one unit to the other? Will this be a recurring issue, or is this the end of it now? And have we proactively, in the way that it's been phrased moving forward, taken care of this issue so that it won't happen again?
Currently, all, all bargaining groups are in the defined benefit system. So I wouldn't see it coming up again unless one bargaining unit decided to leave the defined benefit system, which I wouldn't see happening.
Vice President Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. And Mr. Hassett, I hope that you don't take my inquiries into the implications for the city as anything as disrespectful towards your service toward the city. I just want to understand the full implications of our decision.
Yes, Mr. Booth.
Talking with the city attorney, it is believed that we actually, in order to affect this, would require an ordinance amendment or an ordinance change. And we will research that further, but I believe that that's going to need to be done in order to affect the change that Mr. Hassett is requesting, the relief, the consideration that Mr. Hassett is requesting.
And for clarification's sake, it does say in the ordinance that council can make a special determination. I see this as a unique situation, which would give us special determination. We are not asking to add into the ordinance, Mr. Haskell gets his 18 months, and that's not what we're looking at. And this ordinance was written and approved, and has been part of the retirement system for a number of years. So, you know, I'm sure we will have a further discussion on, on this one, Mr. City Attorney, on that. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. With all due respect, Mr. Abboud, I disagree, and I respect your opinion, but I think the ordinance is clear that a special circumstance can come before council.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Again, I think the man needs his 25 years, however, I'm not interested in litigation either. And so, and I, and I totally respect what you just said, Councilmember Washington, but we've got to resolve this. And the result, and the resolution, we've got to have some sort of resolution on this, and it's to your benefit as well. I would hate for us to pass a resolution and, and do what we need to do, and then it's challenged, and, for lack of a better word, you're screwed, you've retired or whatever. And so I, I think we need to, and I leave it to you, Madam President, on what that mechanism is, but we need to be sure. I mean, this is, this is your retirement, and, you know, I think you deserve the 25 years, of course, but if there's, if there's a question, I'm always, if there's a question or there's a chance that this could be litigated, and you come out on the short stick, I think we need to do the requisite research to make sure that we can do what we want, that I think most of us want to do.
We have three questions that were asked by Vice President Spatafor that we will be getting information on. We have the information on whether this has to be done by ordinance, or can it be done by resolution. And my goal would be that we add this to the March 11th Committee of the Whole, and that we have something at that point. And if it's amending a section of the ordinance, that we have that prepared and ready. So it would only need five days' notice for a public hearing and could move forward. My other question would be to the Chair of the Board. Your fellow trustees knew that this was coming before the Board. Is there a likelihood if the Board were to meet again, and that it was told to the Board that council was looking at doing a resolution or an ordinance, that might, that you would consider doing a reconsideration of your vote?
Yes, and in discussion, when we turned his retirement down, that was the discussion, that we would advance it through city council and wait to hear back for their recommendation at that time, so.
Okay.
But the timelines were the issue, because, you know, we've, the ordinance has been being updated for six years, so.
I, believe me, I know that one. We don't even, yeah. Councilmember Dunbar.
So on that note, is there a possibility that they would reconsider it, knowing that we're looking at this, or was there like a line in the sand?
Well, and again, part of the special circumstances that we're here is, in the beginning of February, we voted 5-4 to say he could count that time, and he was eligible to do it. But he had to put, apply for his retirement in the March, or, excuse me, February regular meeting. So when it came back there, it got voted, his retirement got voted down, after we had approved him that he was eligible, so. Trustee.
Okay, that's
Okay. Councilmember Washington.
Councilmember Dunbar, part of the reason it got voted down was, I was not at that meeting, as I was on vacation, because I certainly would have voted to give him his 18 months. Another issue is the fact that Angie Bennett, who is typically on the Board as a non-voting member, because our Tammy Good is gone, she chose to move over to that spot because she's acting, and she voted, which her vote would typically not count. And rather than leave that position empty, she has chosen to step over and vote, and she was a no vote. But had I been there, I would have been a yes vote to give him his time.
Councilmember Spitzley.
I know, there's all kinds of wrong with that right there, okay? Seriously. She's, she's non, she's non, she's non-voting member as Finance Director. So does she, my question is going to be, is she consistently voting as acting, or does she just vote as acting in that instance? Because that just does, that, that
The, the charter, the charter, the ordinance requires that the Treasurer be a voting member
Okay.
of the E R S Board. There is no longer a Acting Treasurer. Ms. Bennett is filling in that position as a, as the Acting Treasurer.
So she serves two, two roles on a, on one committee?
The, the Retirement Board, the Finance Director, is the Secretary of the Board. They are not a voting member. So she is now in the role of an Acting Treasurer. She has been voting not just on this item, but on other items as well, under the E R S Board. Okay?
Um, okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. So, what I'd like to do is put this on, on the 11th. When is your next E R S Board?
I don't have my calendar in front of me, but it will be the third Thursday of March.
I will be there.
Which is the 21st. Okay. All right. So that's where we are at this particular point. We have some questions that need to be answered. We will put this back on, on the 11th, and, and then it's, as the Chair, if you'd like to communicate what some of the feelings are on, on council to the fellow Board members, you're more than welcome to do that at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Okay, let me get back to where we are right now. Okay, we are going to recess, and we have our council training, and we will be going in the back for our council training.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Off to the races.
Oh, we've got to come back.
No, you guys don't have to stick around. Carol said I can adjourn it without you guys coming back.
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five. Come on, man.
At 8:58, the City Council Committee of the Whole is adjourned.
Who is?